I call a mean to order. And hello. Please rise for pleasure, allegiance.
My pleasure, allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the revolution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Brent Rector from the Woodhaven Baptist Church. Glad you could make it and good to see you again.
Let's pray together. Gracious Lord, what a month of celebration it is. Celebration of freedoms that we so enjoy. We're so appreciative of those who have served in our armed forces, those who are serving now, sacrificing, giving of themselves, and sometimes their lives, so that we may enjoy the freedom to assemble and to meet, to gather. Lord, it is a time again when we are thankful for all of these freedoms that we have. We're thankful that we live in a nation where there is not a dictatorial situation, but a democratic one, where we can gather, we can share, we can decide what's best for our nation. So, Lord, right now, we pray for the leaders here in our community as they'll make decisions that will affect all the citizens of this area. We pray for our state and our nation, for our leadership, that they'll do the right thing, not the individual thing, but the right thing for all the people. So, we celebrate, we come, we gather. What a wonderful time it is, Lord, to live and be where we are in this wonderful community and in this country, so that we can exercise our freedoms. And most of all, we give thanks to you, O God, for allowing us the freedom to choose you, if it so be our will, and we pray it will be for all the lives here. Bless us and keep us, this body as it gathers tonight, to discern the best path for this community. In your holy name, we pray and we give thanks. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Item number four is adjustment approval of July 16, 2014, meeting agenda, Mayor Protam.
Motion to adopt the July 15 meeting agenda as printed.
Second. Motion been made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Item number five is the public comment period, and we have four people signed up. We're going to start with Don Mizell.
No.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Wrong one. We're going to start with Kathy Toma.
I'd like to thank the council, the town.
Oh, excuse me. Name that again.
Kathy Toma, 4912 Sunset Forest Circle, Holly Springs. I want to thank the town for reconsidering the consequences for trespassing without vandalism on the Parks and Rec property. I've read the proposal that will be put for you tonight, and I think the consequences are much more appropriate with monetary fines and a town citation for those trespassers who do not vandalize our properties. I understand that some may feel that minors who trespass without vandalism may not see the fine as a deterrent, especially if their parents pay the fine for them. However, that may be true for some, but I would hope that parents would hold their children responsible for their own actions, whether that be through an apology, through working to pay off the fine, or digging into their own pockets to pay for their misbehaviors. Again, I wanted to come before you tonight to thank you for considering an amendment of this section of the town code. I understand that the hours of open field access is an operations matter, and perhaps not something that the council would take action on. I hope that in the future, the town can find a way, either through closed-circuit cameras or through additional human resources for staffing, so residents have more frequent access to the new turf fields. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
No one else has signed up? Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, a closed public comment period. We'll go to agenda item 6A, public hearing. Installment financing for capital projects. And I think Bob Jessup is going to be speaking. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to be here. I'm Bob Jessup, and I have the privilege to work as the bond counsel for the town. And I'm here on item 6A. The purpose of item 6A is to conduct a public hearing to achieve, to receive public comment on the idea of the town using installment financing to pay for the four projects that were described in the notice. That includes the Phase II of the North Main Athletic Complex, the construction of a law enforcement center, certain transportation improvements, and possible town hall improvements. And the law enforcement center is on our list because of the great job Daniel did on getting great bids on that this afternoon. I'm sure there'll be more discussion of that as it goes forward. After the hearing, we'll ask the council to consider the new resolution 1414, the version that was distributed prior to the meeting. We're talking about installment financing for these projects, which is essentially a type of financing where you use part of what you're buying or building as collateral, and you have an obligation to pay that's sort of annually renewable. You consider it every year. This is a type of financing the town's used many times before, certainly the most common type of financing around the state. The hearing and the adoption of the resolution is part of the process to get approval for the financing from North Carolina's Local Government Commission, which is the agency that has to oversee most borrowings and most other parts, most other aspects of North Carolina local government finance. If the council proceeds and adopts the resolution, then we'll move forward on actually putting the financing package together. We'll be back to the council at the, right now, scheduled to be the first meeting in September for final approval of specific details of the financing, so that we can have the money in hand by the end of September. We're not asking for approval of 15 or 16, as previously put in the agenda item, for two reasons. First of all, 14 covers a couple of the points that were in 16. And we're not, staff's recommendation is not to proceed with any of the bank proposals that were received, but instead to pursue an alternate type of financing where that would involve selling securities, sort of like selling your general obligation bonds. After hours of discussion and review with staff, the financial advisor, and myself, we think this alternative is better because it has more favorable terms for your collateral. None of these options would require a tax increase to retire the debt in your target period. It allows for full funding of all four projects, and you can still have your money in hand by the end of September. I'd be happy to answer any questions now or after the public comment period.
Questions of Bob? Comments, CPA?
I had a long meeting with him this afternoon, so my questions have been resolved.
Anybody else?
I'm good. Chuck talked.
Think we're good?
Thank you.
Is anyone else speaking? Chuck, you going to talk?
Well, just on that topic, we're looking at the last week in August as a possible date to have a workshop, so we can go over in greater detail the actual limited obligation bond financing. We're still getting some questions answered, and we'll be putting a package together, as Mr. Jessup's already explained. So, we will be in touch pretty shortly in terms of finding out what your scheduling availability would be, but what we'd like to do is have that workshop, and then, as he indicated, that first meeting in September, about a week later roughly, that's when you'll be asked to actually pass another resolution selecting, you know, that option.
Okay. Thank you. At this point in time, a little public hearing. No one has signed up? Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, a closed public hearing. Further discussion? Counsel?
Motion to adopt resolution 14-14, authorizing the filing of an application for approval of financing agreement to fund various capital improvement projects.
Second. Motion been made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously, number two.
Thank you very much.
Whoop, wait. We're not quite.
There are more motions to go.
That's it.
Other two or later. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Agenda item 6B, public hearing, 14 SEU 03, 14 VAR 05, 14 DP 07, Storage Max, Sean Ryan.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Sean.
All right. This is the location map for the project before you, for Storage Max. It's located right along GB Alfred NC 55 bypass. This is Newspaper Way, so this is the main access road for the site, so it's in the Holly Springs Business Park. Just to go over what this request is tonight, there's actually three parts to it. The first is a special exception use request to allow the self-storage mini warehouse use in the Business and Technology Zoning District. There is a variance request to reduce the minimum front yard and setback along NC 55 GB Alfred Highway from 50 feet down to 30 feet. And then there is the development plan and the associated waivers that go along with that. So, the proposal is for a 97,650-square-foot indoor storage project on 3.1 acres. Again, the property is located at 180 Newspaper Way, which is in the Holly Springs Business Park. The property is owned BT, Business and Technology, conditional use. The conditional use limited some of the uses, however, the mini storage was not one of the uses that was eliminated, so it is a permitted use in this district. The plan calls for four buildings, which will contain 630 individual storage units, and all storage will be indoors. Three of the structures are one stories, and then the structure to the south of the property, that's a three-story structure, so it'll have a nice visual impact along NC 55 when you're coming through town. Access to each of the buildings will be internal to the site. The site will be gated here after the main parking lot at the front. There is an office in building number two to the front, and then there's parking for the office use there. There's also some parking spots scattered throughout the interior of the site, so once somebody accesses it, they will have parking available inside. The project meets all of our development requirements, such as setback in height. I will point out a little bit later what the variance request is along NC 55 up here, once we get that. This is the proposed landscaping plan for the project. There are A-20 buffers along the north and west side of the property, and then the applicant has actually provided greater than an A-20 buffer along both of those segments. There is a B-75 street buffer along Newspaper Way, and then our required buffer is a B-75 along NC 55 bypass. However, the applicant has provided a B-150 buffer along NC 55, and I'll explain that with the variance request in just a bit here. Foundation landscaping has been provided as we required. However, they are proposing to relocate some of that foundation landscaping away from the interior building, or interior facades, just because it proposes issues with the access for the doors and such for the storage, so that'll be relocated to the outside perimeter of the buildings, just to give it a little bit more landscaping appeal from the street. So, the variance request is to reduce the minimum front yard and setback along NC 55. So, here's the whole site plan, and I'm just going to zoom into this section here. This is the right-of-way for NC 55 bypass. You can see it kind of jets in here and then goes back out. This is the current edge of pavement along the road. So, the variance request is to go down from 50 feet to 30 feet. As part of this project, we did request an additional 20 feet of right-of-way for NC 55 bypass due to a future anticipated expansion of the roadway. And so, the applicant is requesting that we reduce that setback down to 30 feet to accommodate that additional 20-foot of right-of-way because of the unique situation of this property, how it jets out here, unlike some of the other properties along the roadway. And I will mention that as part of that request for the variance, that is why the applicant has doubled the buffer along NC 55 from the B-75 to the B-150. In other circumstances in our UDO, along other roadways except for this one, we do allow a reduction in the setback from 50 to 30 feet if the landscaping buffer is doubled and there's no parking located in front of the building. And so, they have proposed doing a similar situation here, but they can't do it according to our UDO because it's not permitted along NC 55. So, they are asking for a variance in that case. This is the building elevations for Building 1, which is in the south corner here. This is the three-story structure. All buildings feature similar style, colors, and material. Red brick and cream-colored ephes are highlighted with accents of green metal on the rooftops and then the doors for accessing the storage units. I will mention, or I'm sorry, this is building number two, so this is along the backside. This is the facade that will face Newspaper Way, so here's the office in the corner. And this will be the interior view with all the roll-up doors. Again, here's the office in the corner. This is Building 3 and Building 4, and there are waivers requested for both of these buildings to allow the building bays to exceed our 30-foot requirement to accommodate some of the storage unit sizes. But they are meeting the intent of that section to provide building massing along both of the buildings. Just to cover the waivers real quick, again, so the first waiver is to disturb the existing plant materials that are currently existing in that buffer area along NC 55. Of course, that'll be replanted, and it'll be replanted to double our requirement. And then the additional two buffers are for the 30-foot bay requirement along Buildings 3 and 4. The planning board heard this request back on June 24. They did find consensus that the request was appropriate for this property. On the special exception use alone, they recommended approval of that, 602. And then when it came to the development petition, they had some discussion about the elevations of the buildings that would face NC 55, particularly on Buildings 3 and 4, which are these two buildings here. You have this facade here on Building 3, and this facade, or I'm sorry, this facade is Building 3, and this one is Building 4. Two of our planning board members wanted to see some additional architectural highlights on these buildings, such as different brick patterns or other human-scale elements to really highlight those facades. Ultimately, the motion that was made for that was not approved, and the planning board recommended approval of the plans as it is.
So, these comments were made about the one and the three-story buildings?
Just on Buildings 3 and Buildings 4, the one-story buildings.
Those are the ones that are facing 55?
Let's go back to the site plan here. This is Building 4 here, so one of the facades will face 55, the short facade here. This is Building 3, have a longer-facing facade that will face 55. And this is Building 1. This is the three-story building. And I'll go through. This facade will face 55 on the three-story structure. This building is Building 2. It will not face 55. This is Building 3 on the bottom. This facade will face 55. And this is Building 4. This facade will face 55.
Why is it three stories? Why is one building three stories? Just curious.
That was a decision made by the applicant.
Is it aesthetics, or just, I'm just wondering what the function is?
I assume it's probably air-conditioned storage.
But it's only one, oh, it's air-conditioning?
It is indoor storage, so it'll be climate-controlled. And it was designed to kind of mimic an office building. And that way, it would serve as a good transition between some of our commercial areas that we have planned north, and you have the Target Center up there, and then going to the Business Park. So, it kind of serves as a transition building between the two types of uses.
Okay, good.
So, are there actually two floors in there, or just?
It's three story. Yeah, there's three floors of storage, yes.
Oh.
Now, Sean, these buildings sit down from the road, as I recall, like 30 feet. Is that correct or incorrect? The topo is what I'm curious about.
I'd ask the applicant to come up and answer that. I'm not 100% sure of the elevation change.
I'm curious to see what you're going to see from the road, type of thing. I thought it was 30 feet down, but I'm not sure.
The applicant, do you want to get him up here?
Yes.
Sure.
Don, would you like to come up and answer that question for them? Yes.
I think he's already sworn in, so.
Okay.
Sean, while he's coming up, can you go back to the, keep going back, that one right there? Do we know why the right-of-way juts in like that?
I can probably address that as well as anybody. The right-of-way for 55 is not a straight right-of-way like we see on a lot of our roads. It was a variable width right-of-way, and it typically is to address drainage or other needs, that there were grades that needed to be sloped. And so, I believe in this case, it's a storm drainage pipe that either runs under 55 or that needed some additional grading in that area. We don't know what the future widening of 55 will look like in this area, so that's part of why the request was in, to reduce that buffer.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
All right. Don, you going to cover that for us? Just for the record.
Sure. For the record, Don Mizell with Longleaf Development Services, 208 Premier Drive, Holly Springs. I have a team of folks here with us tonight who've all been duly sworn. Mr. Alan Massey, who's the owner of Storage Max, and will be the developer of this project. Stephen Urina, our project architect behind Mr. Massey. And the man of the moment, Mr. Taylor Blakely, who is our site engineer and landscape architect. And Taylor can probably address that elevation question you brought up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. The three-story building near Newspaper Way, we're actually cutting the grade down there, so that grade, the floor level, the first floor as you enter, is probably about level with Highway 55, as far as elevation goes. The next building down, going along Highway 55 frontage, sets down four or five feet lower. And then, that's the lowest building. And then, you get back up to the northern property line, and it probably goes back up another three or four feet.
So, you've got a variance?
It's coming back down and then back up a little bit. And that area where the right-of-way is, Elizabeth mentioned, there is a storm line that comes under Highway 55 there, and we're collecting that at our property line there and letting it pass through the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, we talked about the landscaping. You have an upgraded landscaping on that side? Is that, Sean, was that what you said? On the Highway 55?
Yeah. We have doubled the landscape requirement. Instead of a B-75 there, we've done a B-150 on it.
So, what does that entail? Just example.
It's a mixture of hardwood, deciduous hardwoods, evergreens, small understory trees, a lot of evergreen understories. We've used, I can't remember all the varieties, but I know we used a lot of hollies. We used some Japanese cedars. There's probably some maples, oaks, and so forth in that mixture. And there's also a shrub component to it, too.
Okay. So, that side, that's along 55?
That's along Highway 55.
Is that going to block the building, where you won't see it from 55?
It's going to do a very good job in four or five years, once it starts to reach some growth. It's going to look pretty dense when it's planted. You know, there are sizable plants installed. But given a few years, you know, it will do a very fine job of screening everything.
Like those trees are 12, shows what caliber, two and a half inches in.
That's about a 12-foot high tree.
Minimum height of 12 feet. So, they're going to be probably, I don't know, almost as high as the building.
It's a good start.
Good, yeah.
We're taking out a lot of trees there, so that'd be all right.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Seeing none. Okay. Anything else for Sean before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, just one other thing. All of the facades that are facing 55 will have this kind of landscape. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. All the facades facing 55 will have the same.
Yeah, yes.
I'm a girl, so I. My husband's an architect, but I'm not. So, okay, very good. That's what I wanted to know.
Anything else? Okay. At this point in time, a little public hearing. And Don, you're already up here, so Don Mizell.
Mr. Mayor, again, for the record, Don Mizell, 208 Premier Drive, Holly Springs. And again, we have three other gentlemen that are signed up to speak if needed. We don't necessarily come up one after the other, but if you need us, we're here to answer any questions you may have. For the record, just want to submit our site plan, our various applications, variances, waivers, for the record. I believe that that material's in your packet, so we won't rehash that. The site, I think you probably recall a couple of months ago when we had it rezoned to BT, we mentioned it was a brownfield site. That means that at some point, it was used for some environmentally detrimental activities. In this case, a kind of a town dump, or landfill, if you will. Mr. Massey is.
Sounds disappropriate.
Yeah. Dump sounds so severe, though. Mr. Massey's working through the brownfield process with the current owners of the property in conjunction with the site planning and zoning activities. And our hope is, should the board choose to approve the special exception use in the site plan, that in conjunction with that, we'll move forward to construction drawings and move forward through the brownfield process, and pretty soon be able to get out there and see what we really have to deal with. There's not many uses or developers that would look at a site like this and say, "Hey, I think I can do something cool with it." And I think the site speaks for itself. The site plan is laid out, and it maximizes the square footage that Mr. Massey can build on the property, about 96,000 square feet, somewhere in that ballpark. When I first saw the elevations, when I first got involved with the project, the idea of a three-story, you know, enclosed, climate-conditioned storage facility a three-story, you know, enclosed, climate-conditioned storage facility was pretty neat. And I could see right away where it would meet the town's gateway requirements for architecture, which are some of the strongest you have in town. So it's really neat to see this project kind of morph and change as it goes through the process and meet all these architectural requirements while at the same time allowing an old brownfield site to be redeveloped. So we're excited about it. The waivers and variances, Shawn did an excellent job, as always, kind of walking through those with you. The architectural waivers, basically those were not in an effort to get around something in the ordinance. It was to make a better-looking product by increasing that number from 30 feet to 32 to 35. Visually, you really won't notice that three- or four-foot difference, especially going by Highway 55. But it allows for all the buildings to kind of match each other from an aesthetic standpoint, from a breaking up the various lines standpoint. So that was kind of a self-encouraged variance that we wanted to do, just to get a better-looking product. The waiver for the clearing of the buffer, I think the last, we were here a couple of weeks ago with a little sliver of property next door. You graciously granted a waiver to clear that one as well. We're gonna relocate a power line onto that sliver of property. Of course, the need for the clearing of the buffer here is for grading purposes. We've got some grade issues out there. Not sure what the cut in the field is gonna be, so we need all the property we can have at our disposal to grade and make this a developable site. Of course, as Shawn said and Taylor said, the buffer is gonna be twice the recommended required planting amount in that location. So we'll be putting a lot more back than we're taking out. The variance, again, Shawn did a great job explaining this. We've got that area right-of-way protruding into the site, which would work with a 50-foot buffer if we didn't have to give 20 additional feet for a future right-of-way that may or may not be needed in that area. So that's really a big help if we can get that 20-foot variance. Again, planting twice the amount of trees in there. And I understand that if this site was elsewhere, maybe on Holly Springs Road or Sunset Lake Road or 55, that that option's kind of automatically there for you. If your parking's behind the building and you double the buffer up front, you can automatically reduce that from 50 to 30, just not along the bypass. But it seems to be in the spirit with the UDO. So with that, we're certainly here to answer any questions you may have. We look forward to moving forward through the process and turning this dump area into something that town can be proud of. Thanks.
Take it, Don. Taylor? Sarah Blakely? Speak.
Mr. Mayor, again, we're available, but don't have anything planned.
We're okay on the rest of them? Everybody taken care of? Mr. Massey, okay? Yeah? Okay. Any further questions of the applicants?
I just want to comment that, you know, to have somebody invest in a brownfield piece of property that probably nobody else would touch gives us a development along there. It also puts 97,000 square foot of storage area that is needed here in town. So thank you for putting that there.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all. At this point in time, a closed public hearing. Is there further discussion from the board? If not, we have a chore. Right, Shawn?
One or two.
Actually, more than that. I think there might be even eleven. But that's not a new record, right, Gina? How close?
Sixteen?
All right. Go for it, somebody.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes of special exception use petition 14 SCU-03, as specified in the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 4.01 Business Technology, to allow for a self-storage mini warehouse in the BTCU Business Technology Condition Use District.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, number two.
Motion to approve special exception use petition number 14 SCU-03, as specified in Unified Development Ordinance, Section 4.01 Business and Technology, to allow for a self-storage mini warehouse in the BTCU Business and Technology Conditional Use District with the following conditions: All operations must adhere to the evidence submitted by the applicant as stated in the findings of fact submitted in those findings of facts specified by the town council in conjunction with 14 SCU-03. To outdoor storage shall not be permitted on the property.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number three.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for variance 14-VAR-05 for a variance of the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 4.01.1B.2.A, to reduce the minimum front yard and building setback along NC-55 bypass GB Alfred Highway from 50 feet to 30 feet.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number four.
Motion to approve variance number 14-VAR-05 for a variance of Unified Development Ordinance, Section 4.01.B.2.A, to reduce the minimum front yard and building setback along NC-55 bypass GB Alfred Highway from 50 feet to 30 feet at the property located at 108 Newspaper Way, Wake County PIN 064948316, as submitted by Longleaf Development Services in association with Development Plan 14-DP-07 for Storage Max.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number five.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 7.06D.4.B. buffer areas for development petition number 14 DPO7 for Storage Max to allow existing plant materials in the required buffer area adjacent to the NC-55 GB Alfred Highway to be removed as submitted by the Longleaf Development Services dated revised 6/13/14.
Three, six-three.
Six-three.
Sorry.
Second.
That was a test. Six-three-fourteen.
I knew it would happen.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
You got it.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number six.
Motion to grant a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 7.06D.4.B. buffer areas for development petition number 14-DP-07 for Storage Max. Motion to allow existing plant materials in the required buffer area adjacent to NC-55 GB Alfred Highway to be removed as submitted by Longleaf Development Services dated revised 6/3/14 with the following condition: The buffer area shall be replanted in accordance with Development Plan 14-DPO7 for Storage Max. Once the buffer has been reestablished, plant materials within the buffer area shall not be removed unless dead, diseased, or threatened to become a danger to human life or property.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number seven.
I'll make the motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 4.05B.2C.2B, variation enassing for development petition 14-DPO7 for Storage Max to allow building bays to exceed 30 feet on Building 3, as submitted by Longleaf Development Services dated revised 6/3/14.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number eight. We're getting there.
To grant a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 4.05B.2.C.2.B, variation enassing for the development petition number 14 DPO7 for Storage Max to allow building bays to exceed 30 feet on Building 3, as submitted by Longleaf Development Services dated revised 6/3/14.
You got it. Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number nine.
Motion to make and accept the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 4.05B.2C.2B, variation enassing for development petition number 14 DPO7 for Storage Max to allow building bays to exceed 30 feet on Building 4, as submitted by Longleaf Development Services dated revised 6/3/14.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number 10. We're almost there.
Motion to grant a waiver of regulations of UDO Section 4.05B.2C.2B, variation enassing for development petition number 14-DPO7 for Storage Max to allow building bays to exceed 30 feet on Building 4, as submitted by Longleaf Development Services dated revised 6/3/14.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And last, number 11.
Motion to approve Development Plan 14 DPO7 for Storage Max, as submitted by Longleaf Development Services dated revised 6/3/14 with the conditions as stated on the screen.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
That's it, right, Shawn?
That was a bunch of them.
No more tonight.
I'm proud of the council for the good job he did on that.
And reading.
Uh-huh.
Except for Linda.
Except for Linda. I wasn't gonna say that. I wasn't gonna say that.
We were gonna let it slide.
I was, I was. JINAM 78, consent agenda, Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. JINAM A.D., new business, Town Code amendments for trespassing in parks and smoking ban, John Shifano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your agenda packet is a change to Section 12 of the Town Code. Section 12 is really sort of the police section of the code, dealing with things that you shouldn't do. And what I did was, and there's a section in that police code that deals with use of park property and/or a subsection. So I tacked on these two sort of, two things that deal with parks that have come up recently. And Councilwoman Lee had asked for a no-smoking ban policy about a year and a half ago in the parks, so I figured it was about time.
We got there. We got there, Sherry.
To pay attention to what she had asked for.
Let him a priority.
There's no love in this world.
I apologize. Apologize for this. You know, it's, you know, of course, the driver was to look at that part of the Town Code recently with the trespassing. So what this does is gives an arresting officer some discretion where, as far as trespassing, where there is no damage. Where there's no damage, you're just in the park after posted hours. And by the way, hours are gonna be posted. The original Town Code said there's gonna be signs everywhere. We don't, I don't think we have hours of operation signs anywhere in the park, except maybe, you know, some that are pretty terse, tersely written. So, you know, the hours will be published and publicized on the website. You know, that part of the Town Code is sort of being brought into the 21st century. And, you know, and any person who remains on the park property or had done something, cussed, spit, yelled, did something that wasn't damage-related, can be subject to a civil fine at the discretion of the officer. And the first offense, there's a first, second, third, fourth, fifth offense. But in a sort of general provision of 25 for the first, 50 for the second, in a separate part of the Town Code, and I'll get to that in a second. But this is only in areas where there's no damage. So where there's damage, the officer doesn't really have discretion to use this part of the code. He's gotta write a state uniform citation and charge them criminally for, you know, criminal trespass. And then they would go to court and on these types of things, the judge always says, was there damage? Yeah, there's $100 damage. Yeah, there was $1,000 damage. And they order restitution through the court system, through either supervised or unsupervised probation. And the judge on these types of things will often tack on a work community service requirement and a fine and a probation. So that's where there's damage, and that doesn't really play into this section. Where there's no damage, you're just on there in violation of posted times and rules. And by the way, you have to know, the duty's on you to know where the, what the posted rules are. Or if you're in a section of a park that's closed, the general park might be open, but a section like the soccer fields are closed. It's your duty to know when they're closed. And in the soccer field example, it's a pretty easy duty to follow. Fence is locked, you don't go in it. You know, but, and there may be instances where we shut down an area of the park privately, like you rent a picnic shelter, right? And that's a private rental and it's otherwise closed. Or the hall at Bass Lake, I rent it for my wedding or bar mitzvah or whatever, and it's closed, so it's only to invite a guest. And if I come in there and I wanna do it, then that's, you know, and I refuse to leave. I sit down and I say, this is a public park, you know, blah, blah, blah. And he's like, no, it's a closed portion of the park for right now, so here's your fine if you're gonna be difficult, and just go with that. So that's really what it does, and it references sort of a general Town Ordinance Violation section. And I tried to be as, in keeping with due process as I could, but, you know, it's first offense $25, second offense $50, third offense 75. And then if, you know, if, and if the officer has knowledge of all these offenses, you know, he can either, and each time, he can, he has the discretion to charge them criminally or through this process. And we just have a sort of a graduated scale here. You know, if you're always gonna be taking your skateboard and, you know, in a part of the park that you shouldn't be skateboarding in, that type of thing, then, you know, it's just gonna cost you. And then there's also a little section in there where, you know, they have a right to appeal, which is always a good thing. And that. So that's the non-damage trespass section. And then there's a smoking ban proposed as well, which basically says, you know, no smoking in the parks, on the greenways. And it follows that same type of fine schema of, you know, if you're gonna constantly wanna light up in the park, you know, eventually it's gonna cost you pretty substantially. In that particular instance, I mean, I suppose an officer could write a state uniform citation for a Town Ordinance Violation. Most of them are reluctant to do that with barking dogs and those types of offenses that the DA doesn't like to see crowd the court system. So I would see that, you know, that this fine system would be more heavily used to enforce the no-smoking, you know, and that type of thing.
Now, how does this affect our recent happenings? Is it just, do they fall into this? Or is it, we can't go retro?
Yeah, frankly, the Constitution prohibits.
Prohibits, that's right.
That type of thing. So what could happen is you can go under the old schema and charge them criminally. You still could do that, you know, you have like a year to do that, but I wouldn't recommend that you do that, you know. And so if it were to happen in the future, you know, if you pass this ordinance, that's what would happen.
Well, I'm sure their parents have been there, too.
We discussed this quite a bit, and, you know, the writing of a citation for the non-damage to the park is fine, but I think the consensus is we'd also like to see some kind of buy-in by the offender of not only the $25 or whatever, but some kind of option for community services added into that for the offense, so that there's some buy-in by the offender, other than just paying a $25 fine, so that there is some value to what he has done or that she has done. How do we put that in? Or, I mean, do I have to make a motion to amend what we have printed here?
Brad.
Yes, sir. You know, the general statute only, the general statutes only give municipalities power that are written in the general statute. There's really no specific writing for a, you know, enforcing, we can enforce civil penalties in a monetary sense. There's no, there's no authority for you all, no explicit authority for you all to enforce, you know, a work requirement. But the work requirement then would become a choice that the offender would take, and the officer would say, here's your choice, $25 fine and X amount of hours working at the park, or a criminal charge. So it would sort of be a trade-off at that point, and that would be a choice. And we would have to write that in the ordinance. What I'd ask you to do, though, is sort of give some guidance as to what you think the appropriate number of hours are and, you know, and when that were to be used.
And who enforces the hours? I'm confused on that.
Well, that would be another, you know, a fine is kind of easy. If they don't pay it, I go collect it, I sue them, I, you know, whatever. We, you know, we track them down, kind of like they don't pay their water bill. The hours would be required, I mean, we'd have to designate people at the park, because I'm sure as heck not gonna do it, that would keep in charge, keep track of people's hours and...
And that currently exists.
We do have some, yeah, we do have some people that, and we have, even in the Public Works program, there's people that work through the community service program of the court system. They can choose to work or volunteer, you know, work for us. So we do get community service workers from time to time, nonviolent offender community service workers, and, you know, to work on trails and whatnot, so. I would just ask for some sort of guidance as to, you know...
I think since we've all talked about this at great length, someone has some ideas, and I think I'll start with you, Hank, if you do.
What I'm thinking, you know, is if we were to include community service in here, it would probably make that a, maybe increase the fines, because if, let's say, the first offense, $25, or four hours of community service, it's easy to call, you know...
I don't think you're talking about four, yeah.
Wait, wait.
It's easy to come up with $25. But if we were to, you know, even $50, it might be, someone would say, you know, I'm gonna give them the $50 and, because I just don't wanna work at the park. So I would think, if we wanted to include, that would probably should make the fines a little stiffer, because then that would be a more, a better option for people who might not have the means to just pay it off and move along. I don't know exactly what the, you know, for first offense, maybe four hours, second offense 10, third offense 20, something like that. You know, I'm just throwing that out. I'm not married to any of those figures.
Yeah, I'm okay with first, I mean, the second and third, you do it once, you get in trouble, you shouldn't do it again. So, I mean, I'd be okay with even making it a little stricter on the second and third, but, so we're talking a fine and the community service, like 25 or whatever, and...
Well, suggestion was 4, 10, and 20. It could be other thoughts while we're talking about it. That would be in combination with the fine.
Some of 4, 10, and 20 hours, is that?
Yes. That's just...
I'd like them 4, 10, and $20.
We could add it on, or we could do it as opposed to paying a fine, you know, either way.
I'd say add it on, but that's just an opinion.
But, you know, they're just two options we have.
And how is it handled when it is a minor? That's, it just, we deal directly, their parents are notified, and it just goes directly with the parent?
Parents would be notified anytime they would, yeah, get a charge, because, and...
And it's always, they're always gonna be trespassed by a police officer. So a parks and rec facilities person sees them and they call the police.
They call the police, right. And, you know, that brings up a good question, that, you know, if you have a ten-year-old, we really don't want them shoveling stuff.
Why not? I'm just kidding.
You know, so it's probably, you know, the community service option would only be something that's for maybe 15 and older.
Okay. Go ahead, Tim.
I'm more, you know, I'm in favor of sort of what the fines are right now, 25, 50, and whatever the other, 100.
Seventy-five.
Because I can see where some younger kids are gonna get caught in this. It'd probably be the ones that are gonna be the ones more subject to this than anyone else. And a lot of times, they may not, their families may not even be able to pay the fine of a higher amount. And I think keeping it reasonable like that, at least puts them on record and warns them, and then maybe some community service, if they're old enough, add it in. But I'm in favor of leaving the fines the way they are, so... way they are, so that at least it's payable for especially families that are disadvantaged.
What's your opinion on combining with community service?
Well, I'm in favor of some community service, yes.
Linda?
Yeah, I'm in favor, I think of, I'm doing them separate. I think we need to have a pay, pay a fee, and then some hours, depending on their age. And because the little ones can't do a lot.
I think we all talked about that.
Yeah, I feel it, it's more, you know, yeah, you want it to be a deterrent, but also a little bit more constructive. So I agree that I think.
Well, Hank brought up four, 10, and 20. What's your thoughts on, on the numbers?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Am I fine with that?
Twenty-five, fifty, twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five, four, ten, and forty.
Increments of five.
Five, 10, and 20.
Five, 10, and 20 works a lot better.
Good idea. Five, 10, and 20. Someone want to make a motion on that? Is that appropriate, Counselor?
Do we have an appropriate time period that they have to complete those hours?
That, that really is up to you, you know. It certainly would be easier for us to administer if it were within 60 days or something like that.
Sixty days.
This is in, in addition to, or we're saying?
In addition to.
In addition to the?
Yes, sir.
And then if they don't do that, then it goes to?
Yeah, what happens after that, if they don't?
You know, it's still up sort of to the discretion of the officer, because even, even the town attorney, the town manager, and even the police chief can't say, you officer, go charge that, that person, sort of. So it, it is, you know, it is, if, if they tear up the ticket and don't do the community service, we probably need to write in a, there will be, you know, that higher level $100 fine, you know, that if they refuse to do community service, or a $200 fine, or, or, you know, if they, if they completely refuse, they can either be subject to the criminal violation, which we can't really control. You all cannot, you all cannot write, officer shall go write a ticket. So what, what, what we could do is just make, make it, if you, refusal, absolute refusal, if you don't do it, $200 fine or something.
So bottom line, we've got a consensus that we're looking at fines and community service added in. And can you write that with a revised, if we adopt the bones of this?
Yeah, you just make a motion. I'll put a cleanup version on the consent agenda. And, you know, and need to have a line in there, the additional fine for not completing the community service will be payable within, you know, 90 days.
Okay.
So to be clear, we're looking at $25 for first offense, $50 for second offense, $75 for third offense, community service of five hours for first offense, 10 hours for second offense, 20 hours for third offense. And then if you just blow it all off and say, I'm not going to do it all, there's a $200, we're going to come see you type of thing.
Yeah, if you don't do the community service. The fine is easy. If you don't collect it, I go sue you, you know.
But that's the basic gist of what you're going to clean up and give to us.
Yes, sir.
That's any dam, while the damage would be the criminal.
Damage would be criminal.
That's a whole different.
That's vandalism.
That's the gist of what it's, what you're.
And it says within 10, if you do these offenses within 10 years, so the first offense, and then three years later, you do it again?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And I know this is going to be asked at some point. So the fines we do get, what, where do those go? Are those for administrative, to do all the stuff? What usually?
Well, the state, the problem is the state constitution says that fines collected for violations of a criminal offense shall be used to maintain a free and open public school system. So, and, and there's been several lawsuits that, you know, and that, and that's why there, you know, there really hasn't been a big schema to create this second set of criminal code things, because we can't use that money for our own operations.
Yeah, so we can.
However, we spend.
No, no.
That's correct. We do spend upwards of, you know, three, $400,000, $1,000 a year of our own money on a public school property in joint use agreements. So, you know, it would be my opinion that we could use that, use these monies, as much as there are going to be, to offset some of those expenses. You know, we, we do, and that does go directly to maintaining a free and open education system. If we, you know, because we're mowing ball fields so that, that the public school system doesn't have to mow the ball fields so they can hire a teacher instead of a lawnmower. So we're doing all that. And, you know, I really do think that we can use that money, if we account for it properly in a, in a, in a budget, to say this is our offset for expenses that we've previously had for, or that we've had this year. So I think we can do it. I think we're hopefully looking at tens of dollars a year. I don't think there's going to be.
Tens of dollars, yeah.
I've got a question for you. Is, is there any record of past occurrences of vandalism or that where kids have been charged? And how often has that happened?
He's not here.
Oh, he's not.
Len's there.
Len, Len made the comment the last meeting.
Len's there, okay.
I believe pretty much every time there was vandalism, we'd have to go talk to the department.
I just wondered if you knew offhand if there was, if this is.
The question is how many people, not how many vandalism.
How many people have been.
Occur, but how many people have been caught with vandalism. Because it is a tough, you know, the numbers are going to go up exponentially when we get the cameras everywhere, so.
There's been 17 of this caliber here.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Two of them included.
Thank you.
Well, if anything, I think the key point of all this is that we, this property that we're protecting here does not belong to any individual person, child, family. It belongs to all of us. So when this is trespassed and when it's damaged, it hurts the whole community as a whole. And if anything, we need to make sure that our children understand that.
Well, one, one last comment on my part. July 6, Sunday, in the News Observer, there's a letter from a lady in Holly Springs that said, no place for fences. And her whole point was that she didn't agree with the fences around the ballpark and, or the soccer fields. And I think she didn't know or didn't understand that this was a million dollar investment on all of our parts. That's the town citizens and us too. And it deserves defense for two reasons. One, to keep people out when nobody's there. And number two, to keep the soccer balls from flying out in the street. So I take exception to respectfully to her comment, and I just want to say that. So I did.
As far as the community service, does that need, do we need to narrow that down? Because I think we're, in our minds, we're thinking about somebody going to Fast Lake and pulling weeds. But is there, do we have to narrow that down by saying it's maybe a?
Who assigns the?
On, on a, the community service has to be based on a, or done at a town park or something like that? Because someone could easily say, I'm a candy striper at, at Rex Healthcare.
That would be helpful. Yeah, if we narrowed it to the Parks and Rec program.
Did you add?
Okay.
So, and as the mayor was saying too, with, with the fences, I think, and Linda mentioned cameras, because there was a lot of talk of the lack of time the fields were open, things like that. That, that, the one, one of the good things that came out of this is the discussion, has brought up a lot of discussions and things that we knew that were going to come up over the year as the park was open. So, but I think people need to know, we are working on ways to get the, to get the fields open longer by use of the cameras. So hopefully this will keep anybody from climbing those fences and going where they're not supposed to go.
Correct. Other comments or questions or thoughts? All good?
Motion to.
Turn over to John.
To adopt the ordinances with the provisions that we've added.
Do we, do we need a motion?
Motion to adopt ordinance 1405, amending the town code ordinances, section 12, article six, division three, sections 12 dash 305 dash 12 dash three. Is that through? Or is it?
Through, it is through, yeah.
Through 12 dash 352, as submitted with the changes that we've requested.
Second. Motion been made in second in all favor.
Wait, 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 wait.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I just, so we're voting, what I just want to make before I vote on this, we're voting on something that hasn't been written yet. Yes? Because what we're talking about is the change in 352, section one. So shouldn't, shouldn't we?
Hold off the vote.
Vote on 350, use of town parks, 351, the smoking one, and then, and then just basically tabled or, or?
Till the next meeting.
Till the next meeting, 352.
That's what I was asking.
You do that.
You do, you do it that way. If you don't, don't trust that I will get it right. I think that's a good, that's a good thing. So, yeah, if you, if you just do it.
I amend the motion to adopt ordinances 1405, amending the town code ordinances, section 12, six, division three, sections 12, 350, and 12, 351, as submitted with 12, 352 to be presented at a later date.
Second. Motion been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Glad we got through that.
Thank you.
Took a year and a half.
Yeah, a year and a half. We got it, Charlie. Agenda item 8B under new business, the branding study consultant selection, Jenny Mazel, and Joni Powell, maybe. No, maybe. We'll see.
Good evening.
Hi Jenny, hi Jenny.
Hi Jenny.
I thought this might be the first time I had the longest agenda item, but that's probably not going to happen now.
No, never.
All right.
You can't beat Sean.
I just want to give you some background on the branding study. We've been discussing the value of conducting a branding study since Joni introduced the topic to you at the council retreat in early 2013. And the council directed staff to develop an issue in RFP for two firms with expertise in this area. So we formed a committee, including myself, Joni, Daniel Weeks, Gina Clapp, and Leanne Plummer from the Director of the Chamber of Commerce. And the five of us have completed the process and are here tonight to recommend retaining the services of a firm called Street Sense. They are a multidisciplinary firm based in Bethesda, Maryland. And the total estimated project cost would be about $65,000. There's been some confusion and discussion about what a branding study is. I want to go through a few of the, the points. It is not just selecting a logo. It's, it's much more than that, because just selecting a logo could be done very quickly and without spending that much money. But we have lots of logos already. We've got the town seal. We've got the new, new Holly Springs logo. We have probably close to at least a dozen logos for different departments. I think you saw those at your retreat. But the logos doesn't, don't get you what we, we intend for this branding study to do. In decisions, I mean, I like to think of being able to use the results of the branding study, like we use the land use plan when we're making thoughtfully guided decisions about the future of the, the town. The deliverables of this branding study should provide us with communication tools and a unified vision of who we are and where we're going. It's kind of a big idea, but we're going to get through this for the next several months. For example, if you remember, we had a great experience and success, success with our branding study we commissioned in 2002. Let me just remind you about that. At that time, the NC bypass, 55 bypass had just opened. And we anticipated and hoped for increased private sector investment in the business park, because before the bypass opened, you really, it was difficult to get to the business park. So at that, we had witnessed the success of economic development strategies focused on life science industry, and wondered if Holly Springs was positioned to employ a similar strategy. The branding study we did then was specifically geared for this purpose, and the result was positive feedback and indications that our community was positioned to attract life science manufacturing. Remember, this is back in 2002. So after four years of using that branding study in that direction to market that, Holly Springs was selected as a site for the Novartis facility that is currently employs 700 associates and contractors and represents a $1 billion investment. So that was a very big success out of that 2002 branding study, which really drove a lot of our marketing for that. This branding study will be different. It will be conducted this fall pending your approval, and will have a different purpose. The purpose and final product will be a reflection of the assets and the amenities of our town that can be communicated to enhance our marketing and economic development strategies, and to capture the identity and vision of the community. Like people can ask, you know, people can ask any one of us, what is Holly Springs? What does it represent? What do you think? And we'll say it's family friendly, it's progressive. You can think of a lot of terms. We'll get through this branding study with, I think, something that we, we all agree on and a more of a unified vision and something we can communicate. It's our objective to adopt a brand or a family of brands that are complementary, that can be used in a comprehensive manner for some of the following purposes: as a guide for the logos, for the municipality, and our programs and facilities, to steer the style and design of wayfinding signage in the future. When we've talked about wayfinding signage, we kept going back to, you can't really design wayfinding signage unless you know what style it is. So this will help that. It'll be used as a theme for corporate recruitment strategies that we use, utilized in social media practices, and Joni's department, and could be adoptable by civic organizations and other groups. That's why we brought the chamber in with us, to see if it's something that they may want to adopt or other organizations. For the selection process, what we did was the committee reviewed 11 proposals. We invited three firms to be interviewed. And the interviews were held last week. The committee was unanimous in our recommendation of Street Sense. Street Sense has outlined a three-phase approach that is expected to conclude by the end of this year. And we expect to bring this to you in first meeting in December will be the final, final product. But along the way, there's going to be multiple opportunities for community impact, input. And in fact, a good final product depends on diverse opinions. So we'll be working with Street Sense to advertise all the public input events and activities. Some will be web-based, some will be large community meetings. And we hope many of our residents will participate in that over the coming months. The first event will be scheduled sometime near, near the end of August, I believe, mid to end of August. In addition to that, there's going to be a 10 to 12 member advisory committee established. The five of us will be joined by five to seven more members. And we'd like to have one of you serving on the committee with us, if you'd be willing to do so. And if you could let us know, maybe by the end of the week, which of the lucky ones of you will get to go through this journey with us. And that's kind of a summary of the branding initiative. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, or Joni might be able to. And Chuck's ready to chime in too. We've all been, a lot of us have been working on this, so.
Anything to add, Joni?
Only that this particular company had the strongest presentation for community involvement of the other, of the others that we interviewed and that were in the proposals. They are really excited about blanketing our town and talking to people who live here. And what do you think of Holly Springs? And what is your image of this town? And who are we? What is our identity? And I'm, I'm excited to find out too, with the average person, because we here in Town Hall may have our own pre, you know, our own perceptions of what the town of Holly Springs is. But the town of Holly Springs is really what the people who live here think. And so we need to hear that. And they're excited, they're sending a whole team out. They're going to be at the Harris Teeter at the Walmart, they're going to be serving coffee, they're going to just be talking. They say they love talking to strangers.
Oh, there you go.
We're looking forward to them getting to work. I think it's going to be an eye-opening experience for all of us.
Are you looking for a volunteer tonight?
You can call Jenny anytime during the week. I just saw a hand poke up.
Got one? Are you a volunteer?
That's one, Tim.
Okay.
Got Tim as the first one to volunteer?
I can be his backup. I don't, or Jimmy, I mean.
No, I'll do one, do it also.
I just sent an email to you.
Can you handle?
We have a full committee.
I'm busy.
We'll have to pull straws on this.
Can you handle one?
More, more interesting.
I'm not going to slack. I'm good, I'm, I'll let them.
Okay.
Well, we'll be sure to keep all of you involved in the process all along the way.
Sure. And welcome our opinions, right?
Absolutely.
Of course.
All right. Any other questions?
Actually, it looks like the first visit, I was checking my notes, I think they're going to be here near the end of July, beginning of August. So that'll be the first visit. But once we get those exact dates and what the venue is, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Jenny, we got a motion.
Oops.
We had a motion, we still have a motion.
Motion to retain the services of Street Sense in the amount not to exceed $65,000 for our community branding study and brand implementation.
Second.
Motion been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Jenny.
Thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am, for your interest.
I've never seen some. I've never seen so many volunteers. That's, that's a good thing.
That's interesting stuff.
Item number nine, other business. I have a couple of things. I want to continue my campaign on crosswalks. We are getting better. I am noticing there are still a few that violate this law, this state law, but we are improving. Uh, I was in Fuqua today, and a lady couldn't get across the street at a crosswalk. I stopped and she was amazed, and she got across the street. Point being, it's a campaign that isn't going to stop. Secondly, the anti-bullying campaign is something I have a big passion for. We're making progress. We've had three meetings. The last two were attended by over 40 experts, I guess you'd call it, on this subject. And you're going to hear a lot more from the anti-bullying campaign in the near future, which also involves a lot of psychiatrists, psychologists, school people, et cetera. Anybody who doesn't think bullying is a problem, talk to me after the meeting. I'll be happy to stay because it is a major issue in both the schools and in the parents, in some cases.
Well, you experienced that all the time from us, so I'm.
That's true. Are you talking about maybe, never mind, never mind. What else?
Well, I would like to commend the Parks and Recreation. July 5th was unbelievably fun. It was a good show, and it was good vendors, and y'all did a great job.
Great.
Sorry I missed it.
And the good news was, we got out of there a half hour quicker than last year, and next year will even be better. Right, Adam?
And I'm, I want to question this VIP parking.
Yeah, VIP. I like to be, I just hang out afterwards.
VIP parking's the last ones that get out.
Nope.
Yeah, but it was great. I told my kids, and they, that we just hung out for a good, probably 40 minutes after. Got to talk to the police officer, look at their bikes. Do we have an idea? I know we definitely had more than last year.
Yes, I heard, I heard.
I'd say a couple thousand more than last year, I, I think.
I heard 15,000.
I, yeah, it was.
Heard 15.
It was really.
That was a estimate, estimate.
We could probably use about three or four more bounce houses.
Yeah.
Those things were busy.
It was an excellent event, and I don't think the, the driving out was that bad.
No.
Not better. It'll get better next time.
Yep.
The, like, there's a new community magazine that was published by Mr. Fox in our town that sent out to everybody in the town. Uh, that's one nice thing to see, but I can see that maybe being used somehow to advertise the, the, the study that we're going to be doing. Because that, I think, went out to everybody in all of the homes in town.
Postal, yeah.
And it was a good, it was a well-done magazine, gave a nice history and everything. And they're looking for input from people, so I hope that people will respond to his requests and also if we can use that as part of the study, get the word out.
High quality, great photography, and the gentleman is, is really excited about the magazine, and has said to me and others too, apparently, "Tell me what you're looking for. Would you like to participate? Would you like to know more about the magazine? I'll be happy to be of assistance," so it's all a good thing. Anything else? Seeing none. Manager's report.
I don't have anything tonight.
Oh, really?
Oh, I can offer something if you'd like.
Make something up?
I'll make something up. Actually, I'm not making anything up. I will just thank you. For those of you, I think each of the council members is aware, on July 10th, the General Assembly did vote to appropriate the $525,000, I believe it was, or actually, it might have been $500,000
I've heard either.
Uh, from, for the Avant Ferry intersection road improvements, which we're all aware of the need for improvements to be made there. And I really don't think that would have happened without the work of certainly the mayor, who's been on the phone burning up the lines. Also, members of the General, General Assembly, Senator Behringer, Representative Stam, Secretary Teta was certainly instrumental. Actually, he appropriated
$200,000.
$200,000 out of his discretionary funding for that. And Senator, Senator Behringer, I think, appropriated $50,000 for.
And she had already appropriated 200, so that was, that was her limit.
Yeah.
It was 250, so we did really good.
Members of the DOT, Wally Bowman, probably most notably, and certainly our staff, our engineering department. Our engineering staff has regular meetings with DOT, so they're very familiar with our transportation needs and challenges in the community. And I think in, in large measure, that, that enables us, when we are making the case for the funding, they understand and they're working with us as partners in a, in a true, true partnership fashion. So we're very excited about that. We are now contemplating how to go about the design for that particular project. We were wanting initially DOT to do the design, but it's our understanding that that could take up to two years. If we do the design ourselves or initiate the design, we could probably cut that time in half. So we're, we're looking, we're looking at that possibility, and we'll be coming to you with more information. But thanks to everyone involved, that's a very important project.
And the total was one, if you forget, it was $1.6 million. The town, I think, was 500,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, a little over. It's probably going to be 525.
Yeah.
And, and just to remind folks, that's actually part of that financing resolution, that package of capital projects, that's one of the, one of a number of projects that will, that will be paid for from that financing that we will be coming to you with in the next few weeks.
Mr. Teta was kind enough to come down, and we had a windshield tour. Jenny drove. She was terrific. And we also may be looking at a few other things in the future, like New Hill Road, maybe, and a few other things, so.
I was on New Hill Road today, and after Mr. Teta was on that, General Teta, there are potholes that are filled now, so, you know. It hasn't been redone, but all the potholes are all filled now.
We have more to do, more to do. So anyway, good. Thank you, Chuck. Anything else?
Might want to get some indications from you as to when a good workshop date would be, in August, for the trans, for the financing package?
Early, that last week, if we could do it that Monday or Tuesday, because I'm heading out of town that Wednesday.
I'm leaving.
It's Labor Day.
I'm leaving on the 23rd, through the 28th.
I'm taking August off.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not.
I will be.
We have a meeting on the 19th, so, I mean, I hate to say twice a week, but we could.
Still bad.
To include Linda, I'm okay if we.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be gone for a week.
That week?
The 23rd. I'm leaving on the 23rd.
So what if we did it like on the 20th?
Well, we have a meeting on the 19th.
A meeting on the 19th.
This is August.
Right.
August.
We do have a meeting on the 19th, yeah.
Going to double up on that day? Is that possible or not?
Yeah, I think it is possible. We won't ask you to make a decision. We could, we could present the, the information to you and then give you, you know, a period of time to digest that information if you have further questions, and then we'll come back to the first meeting in September and ask for a formal.
I wouldn't be able to do it early on the 19th. I'm coming in from Charlotte that day, so.
I leave on the 23rd. Won't be back until the 3rd.
20th, it's on a Wednesday?
Yeah.
20th is on a Wednesday.
What about the 20th, troops?
The 20th is finally.
I can do the 20th.
We could probably actually, just to continue the 19th meeting into the 20th.
You do it the second.
Probably. 20th, August?
20th is finally.
We got everybody here.
Joni, what's?
Lynn and I both will be at a conference on the 20th.
21st?
23rd.
Y'all can come, y'all can come with us. It's in Wrightsville Beach.
Is it going to be a nice place?
Ooh, beach, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be at the blockade, so.
I will all go there.
Well, we can hold the meeting without the town clerk. Right?
Can you?
You can deputize.
Deputize somebody, take the minutes.
Deputize the town attorney.
Town attorney.
Yeah, the town attorney's always, he's always available.
That's a nice.
I can hit record and then.
Well, this workshop, since it's a workshop, yeah.
And this may be one of those you'll never find the right date.
Yeah. Why don't we, why don't we do it? We could do it on that day.
The 20th?
The 20th?
20th, yeah.
20th, done.
Is it 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock?
Yes.
That's PM.
Should take no longer than an hour.
Down in the Holloman Room or Cultural Center or Holloman?
What's your preference? Probably Holloman, just because it's easier to book, and we're not, I'm not sure right now what the availability of the Cultural Center would be, so Holloman.
Holloman Room is good. Yes, okay?
Yep.
We're good. Okay, anything else?
I think that's it.
Counselor?
Short closed session pursuant to 14331811A3.
Three?
To discuss some settlement opportunities for some land acquisition matters.
Make a. Motion?
Motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Closed session. Thank you all for staying.